All right, okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. You can call the board, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Hi.
Motion carried. And that takes us to special reports, please.
Today, we have a representative from NetOps, Lambros.
Yes, sir.
Lambros Bowers. He's the owner of the company. A few years back, we went from having our own internal employee running the technology department, and then we decided to contract out with NetOps. And we've been working with NetOps now, what, for a couple of years? Almost a couple of years, right? And he's going to give a short presentation about the program.
Thank you guys for having me. I know in the agenda today, there are several approval items that are technology-centric, and I know they are somewhat big items. The district has been floating along for quite some time on the investments that they've made in hardware and software purchases as it comes time to refresh those resources. Just to give you guys kind of a rundown of where we are with them, I'm not sure how detailed Jim wanted me to get with the VERTEX piece and the renewals that are coming up.
Yeah, about five, 10 minutes.
About five, 10 minutes? Perfect. So, the infrastructure is going to be basically completely refreshed for the district. We've made a lot of strides with connectivity from a wireless standpoint that has made Chromebooks and testing uninterrupted, more sound. We have, there's, you'll see the VERTEX quote that's coming up today. Basically, the VERTEX quote is a piece of hardware that Dell developed that allows companies to leverage what would traditionally have been $150,000, $200,000 system for under $50,000, which gives the students and the district redundancy from failures, failovers, off-site backups, which is something that they do not have today in case there were fire, flood, or encryption if the school were to be hacked. There are several school districts here in Ohio that just were hacked in the last week. Loudonville Down Home near one of us is one of them. So, you'll see in the quote, there's some additional SANs and UPS, so basically, storage and compute that allows you guys to recover if you were to be hacked, if there were failures, and if there are failures, to move over in that infrastructure without disrupting the district. Ongoing testing, those sort of things are going to continue even if you have a hardware failure today. The phone system is ancient. You have to stick a dime in it to make a phone call. So, that is going to be replaced as well.
It's quarters.
Pardon me?
It's quarters now.
Quarters now. So, that's going to be replaced as well. We're working with Presidio. You'll see a budget item here on the agenda today for that as well. And they are going to help us design the new system, and the new system that is going to be, or the replacement system is going to integrate into the systems that are going into the new facilities.
We actually held off on the Presidio until we get the hardware quote and do it all at one time.
Correct.
So, it's not, that Presidio one's not on tonight, but then they'll be on the next board meeting at one time. Just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you for the clarification. Just want to point out, though, that the intent there, though, is to utilize existing hardware. The software has to be upgraded, but the phones that you're using now do not have to be replaced, and it will seamlessly integrate into the new system going into the new buildings. The one-to-one program is going great. This year, we are looking to purchase our two more grades, years 2022 and 2025. As you know, they live with the student throughout the lifecycle of their tenure here at Riverside. In addition, the buyback on those when they are completed, turn in and get $9 or something for a Chromebook, so...
$9?
Yeah. And granted, you know what these kids do with them. They're beat up. They're not worth much. Some of them come in three or four pieces. But, you know, the idea was, so, let's keep these in the hands of the students that join the, that was your idea. What can we do instead of getting $9 for them? What can we do to make sure that the students can just leave with them and take them with them? So, we're working on a program now to help justify that cost, recoup, you know, make sure that the district isn't losing money on the $9. The students can walk away with the piece of hardware that they're familiar with, you know, some time longer for a very inexpensive amount of money. As far as PC replacements, we've replaced around 300 PCs in the Buckeye, Lamuth, and the high school here, and we're planning on replacing roughly 100, 120 more devices here at Riverside. We're taking proactive security measures here as well. I'd like to talk briefly about the hacking. There are some things that we can do inherently with the tools that you guys already own and are paid for. Just set them up and configure them in a way that is more secure. I won't bore you with the details, but basically, we come incognito or camouflage our administrative accounts so that even if somebody does get in, they're looking for something that says admin, or something, you know, that's more specific to somebody who would have the authority to make changes. And we change those accounts to something, you know, innocuous that nobody would look for to tap in, as well as locking down outside. And I believe that you experienced this as well. There's some lockdowns from the outside that doesn't make it as easy for somebody to come in and into channels that have been open before. The only other thing that I will talk about here, as my lengthy tenure is up, is the help desk. Our current ticket count is down to 42, which is an incredibly healthy ticket count for the district. We are concerned here that maybe two staff members on site may not be enough for the needs of the district, and based on the size here, you typically would have a third individual. But based on the automation, the, everybody here at Riverside, staff-wise, throwing in elbows and help, and I think that 42 is a very healthy count, and that we should be able to continue with the current cost structure for the support that we have today for the foreseeable future. And I think I left myself about 45 seconds for any questions if anybody has any.
And I do. This is terrific.
Sure.
So, you talked about the equipment from Dell that's kind of the backbone of the upgrade. Can you elaborate more on what it does?
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's called hyper-converged, but in layman's terms, what that means is you now have your compute, your storage, and your server is all in one box. But in that box, so, the virtualization world, you have a physical box now that can hold dozens of servers. And what's nice about that is you have a smaller footprint, so heat, power, all of those things are reduced. In addition to, you're not paying support on, you know, 26 different server, different server, physical server hardware pieces. You're paying it on one. You still have all the licensing and everything for the servers, other than the virtual operating system, but now you have it on one piece of hardware. And then attached to that is the actual storage, and it's all in one box. So, we're taking so much less room in the rack, less power consumption, less support costs, and it allows them basically to double their infrastructure without doubling the infrastructure. Because we can have two sets, we can have identical sets of your infrastructure here, and those are both attached to one piece of storage. So, even if your entire infrastructure fails, it rolls over to this side seamlessly, and since it's attached to the same storage, it has access to all the same information. So, I mean, in layman's terms, it really doubles your infrastructure. You now have twice of everything, or a third of the cost of what it would cost you to put it in typically. And then the other piece of that, too, we had some backup issues here at Riverside, and we put in a stop-gap solution where they were actually paying us as a service to provide backups. As we did this refresh, we did the calculations. It makes more sense for Riverside to bring those back in-house. And this setup, the SANs or storage, or NAS, is the network-attached storage devices you'll see on the budget. There's two of them. One is going to be here at the data center, and the other is going to be at one of the other schools. And what that will allow us to do is now have backups here in-house and have an off-site backup. So, if there are tornado, flood, fire, or encryption here, we have a backup within driving distance that we could drive back over and restore it at land speeds instead of trying to bring something down over the internet, which would take weeks instead of, you know, perhaps hours or days.
Okay, terrific. And I assume that there are going to be upgrades over the, you know, over time as well to that backbone. How long do you think a piece of equipment like this will be serviceable and useful?
Industry will tell you three to five years. Five, seven, eight, nine years. You know, it really depends. As long as we keep up support contracts, we have automated patching, and the care and feeding of these machines are, they're well taken care of. You know, we run it till we start having problems, and really till we can't get support anymore. So, the industry calls it EOL once it becomes end of life. That means the manufacturer will never, will not support it anymore. They will not put out patches, upgrades, nothing for it. But they do give a period of extended support. You all know Windows XP lasted for about eight years than anybody thought it would. Longer. So, we will run it as long as it's not problematic for the district and we can get support for it.
Terrific.
If that's eight, nine, 10 years, perfect. The longer we can run it, the better ROI.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just have one really quick question. If we are going to consider student use of those Chromebooks after they leave Riverside, is that going to take any configuring, configuration on some staff person's part to get them, to be able to use them now that they're no longer in district?
Very little. And it would fall on our staff, but again, that would take away resources from the district, so I understand the question. It would take very little. These machines basically are just monitors that connect back to the infrastructure here or the Google cloud-based things. So, there's very little that lives on the actual machine. Anything that actually lives on the machine is personal data that somebody put there. And if they're carrying it with them, then that data is fine to leave with them. But we can certainly put in processes to wipe these things completely clean, and we'll push all those on automatically, automated. You know, that's the only reason we're able to support this many students, Chromebooks, teachers, is because of the automation that's been put into the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Chris from Icon. He's going to give us a monthly update.
Hey, good. That's pictures. I had thought so much for you.
Okay, sure. Nick, can you put the pictures off? Thank you.
Real quick, before that, while he's getting that up. Mads Elementary, we finally got our heat. We go Friday. So, we're all heated in there. We're roofed on Area B, C, and I'm going to pass these out. I keep saying that to everybody. We're roofed in Areas D, which is your gymnasium, cafeteria, kitchen. And Area C, which is your admin area. Area B, classroom, and we're all roofed. Area A, we've been struggling the past two weeks between the weather and the whole. So, we would have had a roof on Area A at Madison, but we just have our joists up there. Our deck is sitting up there to be installed. If it happens this week, by next week, it'll be installed and we'll have a roof on. Infrastructure's going on inside. It's nice and warm, so we're moving right on. The interior masonry, gosh, I don't say we have any. Two weeks left of work in there. All the metal studs are done, so it's all infrastructure, getting everything buttoned up to start finishes at some point here. And we're working on the exterior veneer. That's a little slow going right now because we have to tent that in because of the weather conditions when we started that gymnasium on those buildings. Concord Elementary, same thing, same position with A. We were setting our joists today. All goes well. We have the deck on there. We're finishing the roofing part on B next couple of days, probably not tomorrow, but Thursday, but by next week, that'll all be dried in. Same thing, so we're, they're just about neck and neck with each other. We lost a little bit of time with the weather from last month, so we're about on substantial completion. We're about August 13th and August 15th. And then a final completion, a couple of weeks later, my final completion, and we have all our inspections and finish it up watching the lighters. So, we're still on target to finish close to the...
Which one do you want me to go?
Either one's fine. Concord has some more exterior. Madison's more interior.
Oh, boy.
Uh-oh. That's just a picture of the outside of Concord. Like you said, the building shells are up on both sites, so you see the scale of buildings now. That's the crane that's setting the last joists in Area A today. That's just a shot showing our roofs. We have our membrane on there with snow on top of it. That's your cafeteria and gymnasium at Concord. This is another shot at the same little higher angle. One of my superintendents was brave and got up in the lift. That's C where it comes into A, and that's where we were setting the last of the joists in Area A at Concord today. I don't know if they finished it up today. I haven't talked to my superintendent. You can see what they have left to do up there. That's A interior. That's by your elevator. Just to kind of give you an idea, you see all the ductwork going in overhead. You won't see that anymore once all the ceilings are in. Your infrastructure with your hot and cold water lines for HVAC, sprinkler piping, all your electric, everything's being run in the building now. That is the admin area. All the stud walls are up. Electric's in the walls. Plumbing's in the walls. Duckworks up. VAVs are installed. That's your staircase when you come out of the admin area going up to Area C to your innovative lab and that up there.
Really starting to look like a school.
That is where you have your innovative lab and your library, and it'll eventually be partitioned off here in the next couple of weeks, but we're all over, we're finally dry, and we have heat in there, so it's starting to dry. That's down your corridor B. Again, just to give you an idea of everything that's gone on up ahead, because you don't see as much now because the structure's up, so it doesn't look like there's a lot of work. All the ants are inside. That's up on Area B, up on the second floor, Gary. That's where we walked several weeks ago, about a foot of snow. It's all clear to hell.
Do you have any pictures of the veneer?
It's all intended and closed. I couldn't get in there. That's a gymnasium. We ended up, that was our last pour. We poured that Friday. And you can see it's nice and dry. That water's running up when you're bringing the stuff in. Good news is there, that's the last picture here, we have our permanent power at Concord. So, we're good to go. And we have our permanent utilities. We've got our water installed. We've got our gas installed, and we have our permanent power. And that's Madison. That's just where we're at. You can see we're at the same spot in the admin area. That kind of area you'll see there, the word plywood is. That's your office area where the opening is. That's where that transaction window will go, where the secretary's sit, and then people will come in through the vestibule there. Again, that's the same location in Area C where you're going up. Just looking up. That'll be the glass windows up there eventually. Same thing, looking up the stairs. That's looking, that's the view you're going to have when you're in. I think it's the reading lab from there. That's all glass, and you'll see down onto the stairs and all that there. Again, that's looking back the other way, straight ahead there, that'll be all glass. And then you'll have your garage, your overhead doors off to the right where you go into the innovative lab. Same thing up there at Concord. Nice and dry now. Area B, same thing. You can see both buildings are about right on track with each other. That's second floor B. Shows you that curved wall we have there in the stairwells. Same thing up on the second floor. That was just to show you, that's in your, that's where the learning areas are, and give you an idea how those are coming together now. You start seeing that coming together versus looking out and drawing. Same thing, just some more shots of the infrastructure so you can see what's going on there. That's a cafeteria. Gymnasium, nice and dry. That is the kitchen. It's the last thing we have to do right in here, that little wall, that's where the glove of equipment goes, there, your cooking equipment. And that's in the mezzanine, mechanical room, they're both the same. You can see we have the, air handlers are up there up top. And that's our electrical room, too, and we've got all our switchgear in place, our main disconnects. It was inspected today by the county, and we got our sticker, so they should be firing us into Madison to with our permanent power. And that's where it comes in right there.
Good job. That was it. Terrific. So, we're not going to quite be having all the roofs on by...
No, they did this past, last week and this week just killed us, but it's, you know, it's just curving the room.
And just, you know, people who might be listening or people who are here today, you know, when we spoke in December, it was, seemed to be in far worse shape. Then we had good weather for quite a while, and we were able to catch up on the block. Now, we get little setbacks, several, you know, come and go, and it comes in with its spurs on the good weather.
Yeah, I'm not going to complain. We had a really good December. Most we worked six weekend or six days on a weekend, and if I'm going to lose, it stunk losing last week and losing this week, but we'd be in a lot worse shape if we didn't have the December we had.
So, any concerns about vendors or any other suppliers?
No, there is. We always talk about that, so whether, since we spoke Thursday at the meeting, we do have a hiccup right now with, we have our air handler you saw sitting at Madison. We have that, we don't have that at Concord. We have our air handlers for Area B for both buildings. They are sitting in place. Those are the really big ones. The air handler came for Madison. There's a delay on Concord on that, and then there's a couple of air handlers that sit down on the ground above, and we're not getting, right now, they're saying March. I'd like to get that a little bit sooner than that because there's lots of piping that goes in the chemical room.
Is that handler on the curricul path?
No, not right now. But...
Right, but you still want to...
The longer it stays, you know, eventually, that float's going to go away, and it would be, but that's right now, no, it's not.
Good deal.
But that's, you've always keeping my eye out. That will work through it just like we have with every...
So, at this point, what keeps you overnight is just the weather.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So, and we can't control that?
You see what we have left. We have very little, we'll struggle with the veneer, and we'll get that. What we can't get, when spring comes, veneer goes really fast when you're not tanning. So, I'm not, sure I'm concerned, I want to get it done, but I'm not as concerned as the weather letting me finish up the roofs in A, which next week's looking pretty darn good. And that'll really help, and I can...
She's 60.
We'll see if we can get it all done next week. Especially because our roofers work through the weekends because they're out of town, too, so. We can get it, we'll get it. If not, we'll be in the following week. We'll have a problem.
That's great. I know it's going to be cold tomorrow and Thursday, but in the 40s according to my weather on Sunday, so I don't know what next week brings, but it may be a break for us to jump ahead.
Right now, the weather's fine with the masonry. The reason we couldn't do the masonry, it's not, most of the work's inside, plus we're tanned with the veneer on the outside, but the mixers are outside. We, it'd be a struggle. We'd get the water up to temperature, and even if we could, once you mix it and get it over there, it's, the mortar's already down below temperature, and you don't want that. You just, you'll have major issues, and we can't do that. So, that's why, that's why we couldn't even work inside. Just with the masons, everybody else is working inside.
Did you get all the emails from Terricon, all the testing? And it's all good?
Yeah, I mean, there's some hiccups, what they call deviations. And add if we're over a half inch on a slump, or we're going to do a steel inspection, and we have a couple of bolts that need tightening or something, but there's nothing. It's just normal stuff. There's been nothing, and that's...
Actually, I'm not familiar with that.
Terricon does, they call it special inspections. They monitor concrete pours. When the concrete shows up on site, they'll take a slump, temperature. I don't know if they do air tests, they monitor replacements, make cylinders for the seven-day and 28-day breaks to make sure the concrete reaches strength. They monitor the masonry installation, just the general installation, make sure bars installed. They're just recording what was done to make sure it was done for the way it's supposed to be. They'll monitor, they'll take grout cubes where, you know, you make a big cylinder when you pour concrete, you make small cubes with the mortar that you have in between the block, and those are tested to make sure that everything reaches strength. They'll, after our steel's installed, they'll come and they do steel inspections to make sure all the weldings are proper, all the bolts are tightened properly, and all the connections are proper.
Quality control.
Yeah. And it's all documented. Engineer sees that. You know, we, like I said, we have, I don't want to say hiccups, you know, it's just, nothing's perfect, and just an extra set of eyes, and we document everything, get, make sure it's right when they come back and check it and mark it up.
Great. Good?
I think we just have to report.
Awesome, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to old business. If anyone has anything. How about new business? All right. That takes us to the Board of Education Committee and liaison reports. The first is the superintendent's business advisory. I don't even remember when our next meeting is. I feel like it's coming up.
I just got an email from...
We did?
Dr. Bassett. And he asked...
Oh, I had it set for February 20th, is what I see on my calendar.
I think he pushed it back another week.
All right.
And he asked if it was okay. I said it was okay with me, I just... He wants to move it to 2:27.
Okay.
From 7:00 to 8:30.
AM?
Yes, that's correct.
That is it for that. Curriculum and programming and boosters. Mr. Miley.
Okay, boosters, we haven't had a meeting yet, and...
It's coming up, isn't it? I thought I said something right.
And curriculum, we had a meeting, and Steve's going to report about it.
All right. On the 15th of January, we had a curriculum meeting. It was productive. During that meeting, we discussed the Phoenix program, the high school level, the Reader's, the Reader's grant, how we're going to implement that. There was also discussion regarding gifted program. That's what a lot of the community members wanted, so the new school year for the 19th through the 20th, year 2020, we're going to be looking to implement some information regarding a gifted program. More, more information will be coming out on that regarding that soon. Third, we talked about the project lead way, and then during the beginning of the year, we put out a survey as to what the parents were looking for from the school. And the main, main goal that the parents wanted was the life, life skills, so we're going to be implementing that as well. Ms. Malarka could discuss a little bit more on that. And we're also going to be putting on some more computer programming at the elementary level through junior high and into the high school. So, we have a lot of good things coming forward, looking forward for the new school year coming up, so I'm proud to see that, that we're moving in that direction, and our IT department, this was right on time with that. So, Ms. Malarka, do you have any additional information for us?
Just to speak to the life skills, instead of adding additional courses, because that would require adding additional staff at this point, we're looking at some different options. It may be offering some things outside the school day that maybe parents can do with their students. So, I've talked to Dr. Bassett, and we're looking at maybe some different things that we could do, whether it be a workshop or a class kind of thing that might be in the evening or right after school that we could offer to kids and/or parents. Third, we talked about the project lead way, and then during the beginning of the year, we put out a survey as to what the parents were looking for from the school, and the main goal that the parents wanted was the life skills, so we're gonna be implementing that as well. Ms. Malacher could discuss a little bit more on that. And we're also gonna be putting on some more computer programming at the elementary level through junior high and into the high school. So, we have a lot of good things coming forward, looking forward for the new school year coming up, so I'm proud to see that, that we're moving in that direction, and our IT department, this was right on time with that. So, Ms. Malacher, do you have any additional information for us?
Just to speak to the life skills, instead of adding additional courses, because that would require adding additional staff at this point, we're looking at some different options, it may be offering some things outside the school day that maybe parents can do with their students, so I've talked to Dr. Bassett, and we're looking at maybe some different things that we could do, whether it be a workshop or a class kind of thing that might be in the evening or right after school that we could offer to kids and/or parents, community members if they wanted to do it, maybe starting out with just one or two things before the end of the year, trying it out and see what we can do to try to meet that need that we heard from parents. So, we're also talking about doing the same kind of survey, curriculum survey, with the students that we did with parents, because we've talked a lot about the fact that maybe it would be a good idea from, to hear from the kids who are living it, you know what I mean? Probably 6 to 12, because if elementary kids don't like the math program, that's slightly unfortunate. However, or you could insert any piece, you know, any subject into that statement. But 6 through 12, we're thinking about surveying our kids and seeing what they think and what they'd like to see here at the campus. But we do have some new things coming up next year, so this will be for us moving forward, so.
Thank you.
That'd be interesting. Anything else for those?
Good job, Steve.
Good, no problem.
This is the finance and audit and personnel, Mrs. Grassi.
All right, so we had a meeting on the 23rd of January at 7:00 AM, basically, we talked about the Crossroads contract for the next school year and additions for the current school year to get us through the end of the year. We talked about a new type of service model, and basically, what we're looking at is almost doubling what we have, doubling the staff that we have now in our facility, so I think we're at 1.2, 1.4 is I think what you said Cheryl, and we're looking at going to three FTEs for next year, just about, and so Crossroads was here to discuss that for next school year, and they offered us a good price, and so hopefully we will be able to have that on our agenda prior to the end of the school year, perhaps, if they can get a contract for us to look at. We thought it was a good plan, it offers our staff and our students more services, things that we can do for teachers, to give them some supports for the classroom, group things, all kinds of additional things, and we also did talk about maybe tracking what that does for our district and what it does for our students' success. So, we're actually gonna try and start tracking some metrics and whatever to see if that's a successful thing. So, I thought it was a good meeting, and hopefully that's a, it's offering us more service and more to students. It wasn't necessarily about the cheapest thing that we could get, but it was about effectively using our dollars, so I thought that was highly beneficial, so. And then we talked about the joint financing district a little bit. If you wanna add anything about that, they're gonna put the levy on in November.
We have another meeting in April to discuss, and just to make sure that the four districts are on the same page, because all have to agree to move forward with the timing, and so there'll be a future meeting on that, and then if they decide to go this year, those resolutions have to get passed, you know, by basically the end of July, so we'll have that ahead of us here.
And then if we were gonna, if we were gonna put that levy on, then we would be talking about redistributing the dollars at the same time that that would renew. So, that's what we had to discuss, and strategic plan, we haven't really had a meeting, we had some conversations about what we're looking to try and do, but we haven't had any formalized.
We're done. Mr. Placco, could you talk a bit more about how the dollars will be redistributed with the levy going forward?
Well, currently, the funds are distributed basically based on each district's enrollment, so there's fluctuations as enrollment changes among the districts and as evaluations change among the districts, you know, what each community generates isn't exactly matching what they're getting. Going forward, essentially, what will happen is once that new levy goes into effect, assuming it's renewed, that each district will just get the dollars that they generate. So, from Riverside's perspective, we'll see a slight increase in funds, we'll also be protected from power plant devaluations at Perry, it'll kind of more affect them as opposed to the entire financing district, so it helps stabilize our revenue and just, for, you know, it's basically in summary, it's gonna be a good thing for Riverside to have the allocation changed, and it's, it'll be a good benefit for us.
Are the other communities all on board with that?
Yeah, I mean, you know...
The public aren't as happy as we are.
I'm sure they're not, but I mean...
The struggle with it is if they all don't agree, and if we never get to a, well, I mean, we all agree now, so we've already had those discussions, we're all on the same page, but if in some chance it does not go forward that way, then the levy could go away if the four districts don't agree to the new allocation, you know?
And then we'd all lose.
And then everybody with those...
I mean, at the end of the day, it's a good, it's a renewal where we'll actually see substantially more dollars, so. There's a downside to that. Have nothing else?
All right, buildings and grounds, Mr. Half.
Okay, so we did meet last week with Chris and other people associated with buildings and grounds, but pretty much everybody heard what's going on with the schools, and the buildings and grounds really did focus on the status of the schools, so we have an even more up-to-date perspective than we did last week, so we're good there, and then as far as the Alumni Association goes, their next meeting is on February 11th at 7:00, and I plan to attend, and we'll have a full report at the February meeting.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Mr. Jeffries, policy and legislative liaison.
Jack, you, Mr. Miley, you have this for me?
Policy?
I can do that, I'm just kidding. We got a new governor. Things will be changing.
Under policy, we met on January 15th, we reviewed the policies that are going to be on this current agenda for the first reading. There's nothing new under legislation.
Second reading.
Second reading, excuse me, second reading.
Second reading, and we have one policy that we tweaked that's on for first reading tonight, and it'll be a second reading.
It was gonna allow us, it said shall instead of may to have a condensed or a...
Oh, yeah, consent agenda, for the consent agenda, yeah. I think it just gave us a little bit more leeway, so I didn't realize when we were discussing it, I think I did, but that we would have to have it on again as a first reading, but...
It was like two words we changed.
Yeah, it's fine.
That's yours for the consent agenda.
Yeah. It is, we could be here for it otherwise.
It is, I...
All right, thank you, that takes us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. All right, so, I think I already talked to the board about the calendars next year, and I wanted everyone to know out in the community as well as... Typically, we start about a week later than everybody else, and we are gonna start at least another week later, at least. I'm gonna find out a little bit more about where our timeline is in terms of construction in February, but I don't want people to think that we're going to start in the same week as we typically do. So, looking at the calendar this year, that would be at the end of the week of the 19th of August, we usually start like the 22nd, 23rd. We're gonna be at least pushing it back at least a week, maybe two, depending on where we are in terms of the construction. We just wanna make sure that the building's all ready to roll before we move the kids into it. The one concern I had was the Auburn students, since it's a vocational school, we're not the biggest feeder, but, you know, it's not only our kids going to that school, so we need to make sure that we're cognizant of the start time, there's a lot of schools that also send their kids there, they start really early, like the second week, first week of August. I don't want our kids to fall behind, so what we're doing, and I was talking to Mr. Half about this, is possibly providing transportation to the Auburn kids so they can start their programs at Auburn a week or two before they start at Riverside. I just don't know how many kids are actually gonna drive here to jump on a bus to go to Auburn when they could just, if they're driving here, they've just tried to Auburn. Talked to Dr. Bon Tempo, the superintendent at Auburn Career Center, and he's gonna see what he can do about accommodating whatever our plan is. We wanna make sure that part of their education over there is to get certified in certain areas of academics, and they have to have a certain number of hours, so we wanna be real careful not to short the kids those hours. Also, I wanted to update the board on the Ohio Attorney General Safety Grant, we received $22,639.55, and that amount is based on student enrollment in our district, which turns out to be $5.65 a student. Funds must be spent by this year, by June 30th of 2019. We spent already $5,850 updating the Marx radios through the Lake County Telecommunications Department, the radios we've had are several years old, and they had to do some reprogramming of those radios. It also gives us the ability to move them around without having to reprogram them too, from what I understand. So, almost $6,000 was spent on that. We proposed using the remaining funds of $16,789.55 towards installation of two external cameras on 15 buses, to help catch drivers who ignore stopped school buses. On occasion, at 65 square miles, every once in a while we'll have someone who has no regard for red lights on a stopped bus, and they'll blow by us. We have cameras already on a lot of our buses, but we really can't see the bus, you know, the cars going by from the internal cameras. Do you wanna throw your two cents in in terms of what they do and where they're located?
Yeah, seen a couple already, they're located, obviously, the first one where the stop sign is, it's not attached to the stop sign, but to the side of the bus, right below that, and it's pointing backwards, so it catches anybody that's coming from around the backside of the bus. The other one is close to the rear of the bus, and it's pointing forward and catching anybody that will just go through the stop sign on the front side, it'll help with the description of the vehicle, description of the driver, and the license plate number. There are some, not big issues, but a little bit if it's too dark outside or if the weather's too crazy, it won't catch everything, but, you know, you'll be able to see some of what will be going on, and hopefully deter, you know, some of the stuff we have, or obviously be able to make more reports for those violations.
Is that enough evidence to ticket?
Yes.
Mr. Half, are these cameras that you're installing on the buses, we have a rotation still currently?
Yes.
Out of five new buses? Are these cameras installed on the new buses that we are receiving now?
They will be, we're going, I would say it's agenda for the next bid, there's four regular buses and a special needs bus as well, and the new camera systems with the two external and the four internal cameras will be included on our buses going forward.
And those cameras that you're, that we will be purchasing with this grant, will they be, be able to be reused off of those buses and put on the other buses?
Yeah, they could, we could, you know, take them off, if we have a bus that we're taking out of service, we could take those down and move it over to another bus.
We're also replacing the DVRs on the buses as well.
Yeah, we have to upgrade the DVRs, because DVRs now, so four cameras, we need to go to six.
The whole project is $36,000, I think it's $20,000 up at this for the upgrading the DVRs, so some of it's gonna be taken out of the PI.
Could I ask a question? On a four-lane road, do you have to stop for a bus if you're going the opposite direction?
No.
Yeah, you only have to stop if you're on the same side of the four-lane road?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's probably Melissa.
I stop on the four-lane road, I'm just saying. Or on the side of just stopping dead in the middle of the street, then...
And just last week on the news, a state patrolman said that...
Yes.
Two and fours, you're supposed to stop, it's anything over four, you don't have to.
Oh, now see, that's not what you just told him.
That is not what he just said, but again, there's still...
First two, excuse me, Mr. Miley.
Manner Avenue.
Manner Avenue.
Right, because there's a turn right.
And we're supposed to, oh, so I do not have to stop on Manner Avenue because there's a turning lane?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Wanted to present to the president of our board our semi-annual executive board report.
Why, thank you.
Working with Mr. Wally and Mr. Placco about our remaining school buildings that we will no longer be using for next year, Haddon, Hale Road, and Leroy Elementary, there's a re-evaluation this past fall, and Mr. Placco put together a chart here, I pulled up some maps to give the board an idea of what the county is saying that that property is worth. Yeah, well, okay, before we even get started, I tell you, they're telling us that Leroy's worth $936,000. Yeah. So, we're gonna appraise it at 130. January 12th of 2019.
They're versed in that to yours, right?
They don't own abatement estimate, is $193,000. Let me pass it out in some maps here, and you can talk a little bit about it. My point in this is the fact that if we can get rid of these, if we can sell these wonderful buildings without having to demolish them, it would save the district quite a bit of money.
So, have we talked about what Pansyl Township has requested as far as the property in the back of Hatton?
No, not to great length.
Does everybody know what they're asking for?
I think they wanted the ball fields and the playground area, there's not a real playground area, that's where our property is.
Right, they're talking about more, Josh Pennock called me the other day, and they were asking more about having, like you said, ball fields and just like kind of some open space.
It's kind of interesting you bring it up, because I did receive a call from the youth softball program in our community that has used this property for a very long time, and wanted to know if it was still available this summer, called the maintenance department. And I did call her back, and I said I can't understand why it wouldn't be, we're not, if any of the buildings are gonna be demolished, it would be Hatton, right, it's worth more than the other buildings, and we have no, we have no intent to do any work back there. So, I told her to go ahead, plan on it, and we'll keep our ear to the rail, if something comes up, we will call and notify them. They've put some money into those fields themselves through the program, so I wanted to make sure that they leave them through this summer.
I think we need to probably just try and have another discussion then with the Township and find out, I told Josh and Gabe who both called me about it, that they do need to give us some kind of real specific information of what, I think that's, right now it's still kind of vague, but they definitely, they wanna keep some of that for the community.
I think it would be a great thing if we could split it out, only because, you know, it runs one of our name-stake buildings, it'd be nice to be able to keep it ahead in park, and sell off the front end of the property that cuts up to about 20.
Yeah, I do plan to reach out to Township to set a meeting at some point, but because of Ohio guys code, I think, Jim's gonna kinda go through here in a minute, but we gotta give charter schools a first stint before we can go to the Township.
Yeah, I have the order in which we should approach this. I do recall to Mr. Vile, who's well versed in this as well. But if you look at Haddon, the front end is almost nine acres, and they're saying it's worth $1,489,000. There's a .5 acre in the back, don't ask me why it was split that way, because I don't know, but it's 47,250. If you go to the next page, Hale Road, which is interesting, it's divided up into four different parcels. The parcel with the swale is 32 acres, a little over 32, and it's appraised at valued at $140,000. Part of the school is 1.88 acres, and it's $881,000 roughly. .21 acres at Hale Road, another part is $27,350, and .41 acres is worth $103,200.
So, I had a parent send me an email the other day asking, and I don't know if we actually know the answer to this, if we were to get to the point of it doesn't go to a charter school, the buildings don't get auctioned off, blah blah, what, she was asking, because I guess one of her grandkids lives behind Hale Road, and wanted to know how long do we anticipate, like the playgrounds and things like that will still be there for community use, like is it, if you're looking at abatement and demolishing, or is it a year after the buildings are completed, like do we have any kind of idea of timeline of, if they don't, those first two things don't happen and we have to take them down, what our timeline would, would they be looking at?
You've had some discussion with Chris, haven't you, about the demolition, or no?
Not too much, I mean, it's really up to us when we wanna move forward with things.
I think they're just kind of waiting to see what we're going to do with it. We do have some steps to do, and some of it, the first step is a window of 60 days, but I'll get to it in just a minute. But Leroy, again, 14, a little over 14 acres, $936,620. Point is, obviously, the properties aren't worth what the county is saying that they're worth. We must first offer the properties to high-performing public charter schools within our district. The only one we can think of that is, that meets that description is High Stun. And we plan on reaching out to them to see if they're interested in any of the charters. Technically speaking, we're supposed to offer them at what the auditor's saying their value at.
Super.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen, I don't think. They can also waive the 60 days, they have 60 days to decide, once we give notice, and they can waive, sign off on it, if they're not, if they're positive they don't wanna buy it, they sign off on it, we can move ahead. After that, I know we can have some discussion with other public entities, including the trustees, after that, if they're not interested, we can put the property up for a public auction. I know in Mentor, we were talking, that Mr. Wilson, the treasurer there, was auctioning off the property, and he started at the auditor's there, and obviously, no one bought it, but then they dropped it, if no one buys it at the auction... If no one buys it at the auction, we can do a private sale if we want, correct?
Yeah, because they sold one property at the auction and two were not sold, but some of the people that were there were like home developers who were interested in the property that gave them those informations that, hey, contact me through a private sale.
We've received a couple of calls from residents in our community too that were kind of poking around about the properties as well. And we have had some discussion with Leroy trustees as well. So we'll reach out to them and see what's going on with that.
If a high-performing charter school wants to purchase the facility, do they have to utilize it?
Yeah, I would assume.
Do they have to move into it?
I would assume they would. I mean, that's what they're buying it for, right?
I don't know. I'm just asking, right?
Yeah, I would assume they would. Two more items here. Number one is the board, in the past, some of the board members have gone to the Lake County Developmental, Development Council, they have an annual legislative breakfast. This one is scheduled, I wanted the board to know that it's scheduled this year for Friday, March twenty-second, between seven-thirty and nine-thirty. And it's a couple hours where you go and you have breakfast and you have different elected officials talking about the development of Lake County. There's a cost to it, but if any of the board members would like to go, give me a call and I will put you, and I will have every registry to attend. You can do that in the next, I don't want to say a couple of days because we're off of school, but next week or so.
Is that at La Malfa?
It's at Croatian Home.
It's at Croatian.
Which date, that again?
Twenty-second.
March twenty-second is Friday. For anyone that's, you know, recognizing the London season, that's Friday. When you get a breakfast, you're going, you have fruit.
Thanks.
I have one other.
What's that?
January is board member appreciation month and on behalf of the district, I want to thank you for all that you do for our district. You know, we don't do it for payment fortune. You spend a lot of time, I know, trying to work for the betterment of the students in our district and I realize it and I'm not sure how many people out in the community do. But I think what's really important to point out is this particular board, for the most part, along with some former board members as well, I think the legacy that you're going to have someday, if you ever leave the seat, is the fact that we've gone through some pretty tough times and in a short, shorter amount of period, we've kind of brought the district back on its feet and we're offering a lot more opportunities to our students. And a lot of that would not have happened without the direction and guidance of the Board of Education. So on behalf of our staff and people of the Riverside locals, I mean Riverside community, I want to say thank you for all that you do. And I have some certificates here for you.
It's amazing where we come in ten years.
I know.
I remember that first week here.
From cutting, from cutting twenty. Talking about the meeting, we don't, we don't, that's not, thank you.
Crazy.
Is that, thank you?
First meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wow. Remember that?
No, I just, the one in New York.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just had forgotten it was your very first meeting.
Yeah, it's the first one.
We just threw you to the wolves immediately.
Snow day, is it?
Yes, it was on a snow day, you're right.
I would remember that.
Yep, oh yeah, some of the people asking, it was so down.
We have, yesterday, we did put out a teacher assignments to the teachers for next year. I want to apologize to the board because when I was sending an email out a couple weeks ago, kind of explaining the process, I started writing the address of the whole district, assuming you were going to get a copy of it, and then I erased it, deleted it and put down just the elementary school, so I figured I wasn't going to send it to the move or the high school. So in the meantime, when the president calls me up and says, hold on, I didn't know about this, none of us knew about it, I said, yeah, I sent an email to you and then I realized what I did and I want to apologize to the board, I didn't want to catch you off guard on that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Placko, you're up.
All right, we've got a few slides tonight. But before I go to the slides, I wanted to kind of backtrack again when we talked about the Attorney General Safety Grant. I also want to talk about a different safety grant through workers' compensation. I mentioned this a few meetings ago, that I was going to apply towards the main vestigial changes at the new schools. And workers' compensation got back to me and said, hey, we got your application. Just so you know, it's going to be about sixteen-week process. By the time we review your application and make payment for the grant guidelines, you can't do anything until we approve it. You can't order or approve any change orders until we make payment in about sixteen weeks. Now, never mind the fact that we have ninety-eight to spend the funds, wants it approved, but it takes them sixteen weeks to approve it. And there's just no way I could hold up a building project for sixteen weeks while we wait for their approval. So I told them to discard that application and we'll reapply for another purpose. There's always plenty of things that we can apply for. So in addition to the fifteen buses that we're upgrading on the cameras, we're also going to, we're applying for the grant for ten additional buses to put an entire camera system in that, these ten buses do not have any cameras in it, so we're going to put in the four internal cameras and the two external cameras with the DVR into these two new, into those ten buses. And then also, there were some radio upgrades as well for transportation. So the total cost for the ten bus camera systems, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. For the radios, it was another eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents. So basically, if the grant gets approved, workers' compensation will cover seventy-five percent of that cost. We would pay twenty-five percent of the cost. So we would get thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars in the grant funds, which leaves about forty-four hundred dollars left on that grant that we can apply, again, for something else. You know, there's things that, there's a list of whole things we can do, even as simple as like floor cleaning machines, we can apply for that, like food fryers and slicers and little things like that, that we can apply to get additional funds. So that application's been sent out now, so we got to sit and wait probably sixteen weeks, but the goal is by the time that gets approved, we can hopefully move, you know, the fifteen upgrades will be done at that point. Hopefully, we can do the ten additional installs and then with the, getting the new buses over the summer, which you've been doing every year, at that point, we'd have about thirty buses by the start of next school year that all should have these camera systems. That's about half of the fleet. You know, we didn't go for more because some of our buses are going to be replaced in a couple of years, so it was weighing the option of whether to invest that kind of funds in something that, and then having to pay like, you know, because it takes a lot of work to get them taken out of those buses and put in other buses, so.
Are we, do we have the capabilities to actually install the cameras or do we have to outsource that?
For this project with that, we're going to have the company who installs when we buy new, is going to do this install, but we could do that in-house if, you know, there's a lot less, like a few that we're doing at a time, we're upgrading, just a few, but with everything that we have going on out there now.
It just makes sense to go with the professionals.
Yeah, I mean, we're behind and, you know, not horribly behind, but, you know, wanting to maintain what we have, so there'd be a lot to add on all at one time.
Where's our, what is the number of buses that we currently have in use now?
With spares and everything, we're sitting at about sixty-five.
Sixty-five? And the oldest one that's on the road?
Well, quote me, but probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. It's almost older than me.
Okay, to go into the couple of slides I have here, I want to talk about tax rates. As you know, two thousand and eighteen was our second annual reappraisal year, our six-year reappraisal. And because of House Bill nine-twenty, when values go up, tax rates go down on outside village, not necessarily inside village. So basically, this is a list of all the Lake County school districts and the column to the far right is the new tax rate in effect for tax year two thousand and eighteen, collection year two thousand and nineteen, so these are tax rates reflected on the current tax bills that went out. And you can see that Riverside is still the third lowest school district tax rate in Lake County. These are residential rates, not necessarily, we're not looking at commercial or public utility. And our rates here, they include all of our levies, but does not include the financing district levy, which is Painsill City, Riverside, Madison, and Perry. And that's two point two-eight mils on top of what's listed in that right column. But even with factoring that in, we'd still be third lowest in Lake County. You can see how it decreased from Riverside, we were thirty-six point six last year, now we're at thirty-four point two-four and that's because of the valuation increases from the reappraisal. You can see like Wickliff at the very top, their, their effective rates actually went up a little bit and that's because their home values did not increase, they're more level or slightly decreased overall as a community. Going down to just reviewing what levies make up that thirty-four point two-four effective mileage, you know, all the levies, you know, we have the inside mileage of four point eight mils and then the nineteen seventy, all levies before nineteen seventy-six, eleven point eight-five mils, nineteen eighty, we have nineteen eighty-six, and then the two thousand and nine substitute levy that replaced the two thousand and four emergency levy currently at four point one-nine mils, down from four point five-nine. Our operating levy that we passed in May of two thousand and seventeen was four point nine mils, that is now reduced to four point five-two. The PI levy is now down to two point three-one. And what's interesting is the debt levy, we started at one point nine-two for the construction, we're already down to one point five-six on that collection. The county auditor adjusts that rate based on what our, our debt payments are and our balance and our debt service fund, you know, with the favoring, favorable borrowing we got when we issued those debt, probably at a good time and interest rates were still low, that's how that mileage was able to drop from that point. Doesn't necessarily mean it's a, it's a tax reduction on people's bills at all, because because of House Bill nine-twenty and recalculating all the rates, it all kind of depends on what your value of your home does compared to the community as a whole. So some people might have saw decreases, some people might have saw increases, it kind of depends on what your individual house value did with the reappraisal. For example, my house went up in value about six thousand dollars with my tax bill, it's down like a hundred and something dollars a year. So it all depends on how your value does compared to the rest of the community. And then the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen audit is done and got released to the public today and we received the auditor's state award for having no issues with the audit, no management letter comments.
Good job.
Findings.
Good job, yeah.
I believe it's the, I believe we've gotten it every year since two thousand and twelve. I just haven't been able to find the two thousand and fourteen certificate. I'm assuming we had it that year because we didn't have any comments that year, but you know, I don't want to officially say we've been getting it every year, but someday hopefully I'll stumble across that so we can have it in our possession.
Excellent.
And then I want to look at financial reports here. I try to do these quarterly and I'm only going to go through real quickly, just point out a few highlights. I'll post these on the treasurer website tomorrow or this evening before I leave. I'm just going to skip down to this page here, the fifth page of the report, comparing, I know it's a little small, but I'll kind of walk you through it, comparing last December to this December and then last fiscal year to date to this fiscal year to date. And the thing I wanted to point out was just all the way at the bottom, how things have turned around. Last December, our unencumbered available balance in the general fund was eight hundred and forty-three thousand. This year is six point two million. So that's a five point four million increase. That's based on, you know, all the Medicaid payments we got, the higher collection rate and with the operating levy went in effect, we had the spike in collection with the tax law changes, a lot of things that fell in place in our favor that, that were good, so now we're in a financially strong position because even though the hundred and forty-three thousand sounds like a lot, that's less than one payroll. That's where, every year, we're kind of always like, do we need to borrow to make payroll in late January, February? We don't have to worry about that. This year, we're finally at a place where we have a good, enough balance that we're not worrying about it being too low, but not to a point that we're hoarding cash, basically. And then with that, you know, having those higher balances helps us because we can, we're earning higher interest rates now at two point five percent now that we're getting on our money. So when I scroll down to our revenue report, you know, we're fifty percent through the year. Down here, interest revenue, we projected a hundred and seventy-five thousand this year. We're already at a hundred and forty-one thousand, that's eighty-one percent of what we projected, so we're going to far exceed the hundred and seventy-five thousand projected again this year. And just kind of going through other things, we'll be getting the property tax settlements February, March times, so we'll see how we fall in. It was a little bit low the first half and that's because of the, we had that spike in collection last, first half of last year, so we had a lower collection in the second half, so which is the first half of a fiscal year, gets a little confusing with the difference between calendar year and fiscal year. So this was kind of expected to be less than fifty percent, but we expect to recover that in this collection here. So we'll monitor that closely and make sure we're on target when we update the five-year forecast in May. State funding, we're about right where our fifty point seven percent. And just going through, we're kind of right where we anticipated forty-eight point four percent total collective revenue so far. And then for expenditures, fifty percent through the year, salaries are at forty-nine point two percent of what we budgeted, benefits at fifty point eight percent right now. Contracted services is trending lower at thirty-eight point six percent. Supplies is trending lower at forty-four point one percent there. And then capital outlay is also below at thirty-nine point four and then other debt services at eighty-three point four. That's normal because we already made the principal payment, we'll make another interest payment and we'll be right on target for that. And then for other expenses, we're a little bit lower right now at thirty-nine point eight percent. And then down to the investment report, this is our construction funds that are being invested right now. You know, one of the things that we ran into was we locked in good investments, we first passed the bond issue, but interest rates have been slowly trickling up over the past, since November of sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. So now that some of those investments are retiring, we're trying to reinvest higher, you know, until we get to pay out, it was large construction bills each month. So we're right now arguing about, overall getting two point seven percent, but you can see how things vary, like commercial papers, real short-term, we're at two point five, three percent, but USB government agency notes were like one point three-one, those were investments we locked in a long time ago that were above market interest rates and now they're below. So you can see maturity, we're keeping very short maturity, you know, quarter a year, tenth of a year, point zero one of a year, so it's, we're keeping it short-term and plus with all the construction funds, we're starting to draw now, the construction's in its, you know, main focus now, that we'll be drawing these funds quickly. And you can see our interest earnings to date, net fees is eight hundred and three thousand dollars we've earned on that, on those construction funds that have helped offset some of the additional costs that we've incurred. That concludes the financial report and I also wanted to give a quick update on the construction budget. Here's, I have a couple of handouts just to pass out.
How often do you bill us?
They bill us, we get a bill every month, based on the timing of things, sometimes they're, they're behind schedule. Basically, how Icon does the process is there are subcontractors submit by the twentieth of each month to them, then they compile the, what's called a pay application, so they combine all these subcontractor bills into their bill and then they get those to us. Typically, it kind of has been varying based on the kind of issues they have with reviewing those subcontractors once. So we typically get them fifteen or twenty days later around the end of the month and then we try to turn around within a week just because we know that there are subcontractors that have been going so long without getting paid, especially earlier in the process. And so we get them, you know, we do get them about once a month. Sometimes we won't get one one month, but we get it just right, we get month in close or like, well, we got to close the month out and then we'll make two payments in one month, one at the beginning of the month, one at the end of the month. But those average anywhere from one point four to two million dollars a month is what our payment is to Icon. And then, and each invoice is usually about somewhere between a hundred and fifteen, two hundred pages of documentation that we go through and we spot check and verify that everything kind of adds up correctly. And I think, I think Chris gets a little annoyed with us because we've, we've probably spit back about half a month and find little, you know, and most of the time they're, you know, small changes, you're off ten cents, and if you're off ten cents, that throws you off, you know, going forward, so we kind of kick them back and they correct them as we do. So they probably, they probably hate us over here, but we make sure that everything ties out because once you try to say, oh, we'll fix on the next one, next one, next one comes and it doesn't get fixed correctly, then it just keeps carrying forward and this makes reconciling much harder. So the first attached, the first page I sent out, this one here, that's in landscape format, this is just the change order listing. The first page is Concord, the second page is Madison Avenue and not much has changed other than, this is the last time we were over this, I think we went over it in December, but we approved change orders for Icon using their construction manager contingency, which is already built into the contract, so there aren't any increases to contracts, it's when Icon says, hey, we're going to work this weekend, is that okay? And they say, yes, you know, we're already paying for the straight time that they have to bill us for the time and a half that they have to pay their subcontractors. If they work on a Sunday, it's double time, so that's what causes some of these CMR, it's called CMR contingency change orders where this is paying for the overtime portion of those subcontractors paid. And you can see, you know, when Chris was saying, December ended up being $34,000, so they worked several Saturdays and Sundays, but other months, like for example, October was $170, so it all depends on what month it is, that's already built into their, their contract. To go to the second page, the CMR contingency in Icon's contract is 421,000 and we spent 180 at so far, so there's 312,000 left. Any unspent contingency comes back to district and then the project, Icon has to document all those hours, basically we're working a timesheet, so I give all kinds of documentation supporting these numbers. For change orders that do increase the contract, as we approved the ballistic glazing back in December, which ate up a lot of our owner contingency, we had 600,000 in owner contingency, we're now down to about 45,000 left. So as additional change orders come through and we exceed that, then it'll start increasing, you know, our, will withstand that our project fund at this point. As far as what's outstanding on the project, there's a couple of change orders, we made some, made some changes to the, the main vestibule area, that's about $31,000 a building, that's, we've been waiting on that pricing since last August, a lot of the work's already been done, they've been architect and our construction manager had to go back and forth on pricing to make sure it was right, so they haven't finalized that to us yet. There's also like the relocation downhill sign at Concord, expected to be about $14,000 and then some window and revisions, they're about $16,000 a building. So those have been kind of outstanding pretty much since last summer, they were looking at hopefully finalizing those pricing and have that to the board sometime in February, hopefully. Then there's a few other real small changes for like fire alarm adjustments and adding a door between two classrooms, it's little things like that that will be fairly minor. One of the things I did request pricing for playground surfacing, because our, right now the spec to have the, the wood chips for the playground, I said, hey, what's the cost of putting in like a poured rubber surface? And that came in much higher than I ever imagined and I, you know, for, for example, Concord's $195,000 and
Which it is.
I think Mass was $170,000 and I made the comment, why don't we just put ballistic glazing on the ground? I don't think they liked my joke too much, but yeah.
That was a good joke.
So we'll decline that change order for sure because that was much more than I anticipated. It was much lower than that, then I'd say, hey, let's consider that, but
Yeah.
Not when you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
The chips will suffice.
Yeah.
The second handout, the one that's in portrait, this is, this is the same one I've been giving you, you know, for a while now and
No doubt.
This kind of shows our current balance, what's outstanding as far as purchase orders.
The mature price is.
We still have to clean out the demolition of Mass Avenue, which expected to be 243,000. We set up, the furniture went out, did this week, we'll get that pricing on about February 12th or so. So that, and so on, so that will come out, hopefully we'll have that on the board agenda in February and hopefully the revised budget of 706,000 that comes close to that.
Mrs. Malaka, are you excited about the, the furniture that we're going out for bid for?
I'm very excited that we're out to bid, yes. We are, we will wait with bated breath till the second week of February and then we will, we're hoping, we actually, that was a big conversation, yes, oh, it was just yesterday. It was like it was a lifetime ago and yesterday we had a big conversation about that and being very clear about when we would get that information back and so hopefully we'll be bringing something to the board to discuss at the end of February, make some decisions.
Terrific.
Do we put it out in alternates of different options, you know, as far as one, you know, it's very, yeah, it's very complicated, but we, we, it's put out in options so we can kind of make decisions, do we want to spend extra for exactly what we want, do we want to try to cut the cost down to whatever we need to cut that to, we'll see what that pricing is, you know, and I always joke that it's coming higher than we expect because that just seems to always happen, but you know, it's, maybe we'll, maybe we'll get lucky and we'll, we'll come in under budget for once on, on something, but we'll see how that is. And then also I project interest earnings that we've been earning just through March, we're going to get more earnings, you know, throughout the process here, but you know, just being conservative only through March, having gotten an updated interest projection on that, plus with when you're drawing down one and a half to 2 million dollars a month, that interest earnings is just start dropping dramatically as our balances go down. So we get all the way to the bottom, we're still about right where we had been trending since all the way back when we had schematic design, we said we're about 2 million over budget at this point, you know, but that overage includes the demolition of the three schools, which cost about 1.4 million dollars, so if we're able to sell those buildings, we don't incur that 1.4 million dollar cost, which gets us closer to budget and if we sell one and get funds for it, that will bring us right and target to where we are that we only end up using the bond issue for the new construction, so that's the ultimate goal, but there's still a lot of moving pieces and we're still trending the way we expected to and you know, if there are overages that can't be maintained within the project fund, we've been reserving some PI funds to help with those overages and if we don't need those PI funds for that, we can start considering other projects. I know there's many other things that we need to do, but we need to just take little parts at a time.
So, you know, there is a time when we talked about doing that learning terrace, which obviously that came in ridiculously expensive. Has there been any discussion though, because you know, RLEF was interested in donating something to these new buildings, it would be, you know, obviously something that could be used for education.
Other than so sure, even with the new buildings, but even with the old buildings, maybe retro in a classroom into an innovation lab over at Buckeye and Melbridge. We can't make those two schools brand new, but we can do a few things to them to enhance the learning experience.
Yeah, okay. And then speaking of the other buildings, do we have any kind of updates on, I know Dan Weiner's been out on what kind of things are we can do?
I talked to Mr. Alpha and Mr. Weiner and they're going to give a couple of different options on almost HVAC, but maybe what they can do to cool down the building in the hot summer in terms of roof units, a whole type of central air HVAC system for the schools and even some floor units, just to see what it looks like. I'm not so thrilled about the floor units only because we use two-floor units over at Madison Avenue for MD room and it doesn't, it may take a little bit of the edge off, but it really doesn't cool it down a whole heck of a lot. Now I don't even know if our electrical, we have electrical, electrical capacity in the buildings, they have two of those in each of the rooms, those are the things we're looking at right now. We're also looking at maybe doing some safety enhancements to the entrance ways as well.
Are we like getting quotes on things like that?
Yeah, we're working, we're working on it right now, we have to design how the, the entrance ways are going to look. It's a little bit difficult, not so much at Buckeye, Melbridge is a little bit more difficult. As soon as you walk in, there's a staircase right across from the office and what you want to do, you want to funnel people to the office and not anywhere else. It's kind of the same thing here at Riverside, as soon as you walk in, you can't, it's hard to glass off that staircase, you can't do it. We're working on it, we'll see if we, we know what we're doing, we'll
Well, the upside is if we do a later start, we're past some of those really terrible weeks, honestly, too.
So Mr. Weiner has been, you know, doing various things and was ill for a while, but with regard to the HVAC, the coin of the, the two legacy elementary schools that are remaining, have we, can you elaborate more on, on who we've spoken with and?
Yeah, we, we initially looked at what the OFCC stated would be the cost to put air conditioning in Buckeye and Melbridge. And from what I remember from the audit, it was over a million dollars a building and we were thinking that obviously if we're going to eventually pursue the, the second phase, that eventually Lamuth would turn into an elementary school and we wouldn't want to put that kind of money into a building that might come down in a few years. With that being said, we, we have been asked by several parents in each of those buildings what we're going to do to make those places better and we have to give them an answer. Whether we do it or not, I can't just say yes, I can't say no, I want to have something to back up what our decision might be. If it is too expensive, I need to be able to say it's going to cost us some amount of money. Maybe it's not that expensive, we bring it to the board and we decide that we might go ahead with it, I don't know. I have to get those, those parts of the project, cost of it before we can make a determination. And they are working on it, like I said, that last discussion we had was about a week or two ago.
Do you think that, that we can have a discussion at the, at the February Buildings and Grounds meeting or in March? I definitely would like to, to have a more in-depth discussion with, with Mr. Weiner and with the vendor or vendors that we'd be potentially looking at.
I know Mr. Reed is looking into some of the options right now, Mr. Reed is the, the maintenance man that we have here that is the expert on the HVAC system, it's JR. So I can follow up, Jim and I can follow up with, with him to see where we are with it, how long it's going to take.
Okay, because I would definitely like to speak with them, you know, in the Buildings and Grounds, that would be terrific. And I appreciate all the efforts that's going on, I know we're trying to be creative and, you know, thread a, put a lot of needles with all this.
What I figure if we're, if we're going to look at Buckeye and Melbridge, you know, maybe if, if again, it's a, it's a longer term with those buildings, we should probably look at a few of the other schools as well. Lamuth is going, it's someone building that's going to be around even, even if we go through the entire project
Insulating during what?
Or not, and not all of it is air-conditioned either and neither is the high school. Now I didn't have a discussion with Mr. Reed or Mr. Weiner, it was just the two elementary schools.
What's the status of our ballistic glazing windows, because I know they had to order those.
We, yeah, we had a long, we had a three-hour meeting yesterday, almost three hours and a lot of it was revolved around that. The issue is, is how it impacts the HVAC system, you know, and the insulation, the difference between insulated glass and level three ballistic glass. And they did some tests and some estimates, again, a bit by frustration, and we've fallen short on a test or two and, and my, my point to the architects was that they're assuming that all of the glass in the entire exterior of the building is going to be that level three, which it isn't. It's going to be first floor, it's not going to be second floor, but they're assuming it's both floors. So we think that that test would come back better with the insulated glass on the second floor, level three on the first floor. So they have to go back to the drawing board again. And again, it's the, the little details that we talk about that sometimes seem to be forgotten and kind of delays a lot of our decision-making here, to put it, to put it bluntly.
That's not going to hold anything up, is it?
No, I mean, there's some discussion about the metal frame, the ballistic glass is a slightly thicker than insulated glass, so they have to look at how they're going to fit them into the metal
The frame.
Frames and there's a different type of application in terms of hardware, because the glass is heavier, they're not sure if the glass, since it's not insulated, if it's even thick enough where it doesn't, on real cold days, whether or not it might frost up. I mean, there's a couple of issues, the sealed, the windows that are insulated are sealed, these don't have any interior, it's nothing inside of it, it's just a big thick piece of glass. So those things we're, we're dealing with now.
Yeah, we're still within a reasonable timeframe because they can't even install the windows until the veneers install on the outside, the decorative brick, so they're not even to that point where they can install the, the glass windows, so they're still, I know there's a lead time the manufacturer's going to ask them, the contractors all aware that, he's got a couple of sources he can get it from that he's been comparing what that is and how soon he can get it.
Yeah, they want the windows to look visually similar too, you know, you want the bottom ones looking any different than the top ones. So there is a type of QV, type of coating that they can put on them and it's real minimal cost, it was like a dollar a square foot or something like that, considering, I mean, the whole building's not all glass, but it might be something we might do to make sure that it looks good from.
Yeah, but I mean, I think the aesthetics are important, so don't want to go overboard, but that would certainly be a reasonable thing to put.
Yeah, you're right.
It is, I mean, I think, I think we end up with some, some great-looking buildings, even if it is a little bit challenging working with the architect and some of the other things, but I mean, in the end, we'll have buildings, the whole community will have problems, so.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. That takes us to public participation, anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President, speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda, first consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time, any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually, first up is finance and audit.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the financial audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through I. Give me a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any discussion, we just, we do have the crossroads for an additional 10,000 that's going to get us to the end of the school year, that we anticipated would get us through the end of the school year based on what we currently have in our facilities right now. And then again, if we can have something for the board to look at prior to summer recess, that would be great because then that will give us some time. I mean, I don't think that, they may not actually have stamp hired by that time, but at least we'll have some, we could have a proposal on the agenda before summer, that would be great.
I wanted to clarify this, within the consent agenda, because I think the draft agenda that went out over the weekend had a voting thing within that, that wasn't supposed to be there, so it's included in the consent.
Thank you.
And other than that, I just want to briefly go through the donations to the boys lacrosse, we have from the Elks Lodge and the girls lacrosse, we have to donate it to the Riverside Veterans Wall of Honor, Diane and Timothy Herbert, Heidi and Alan Perry, Beth, I'm going to say it, Ron Nezvich. The January pasta dinner apparently was very successful, American Pride Tree Service, Lois Wyatt and the Riverside Band Boosters, and then we have to the Riverside Academic Decathlon, Michael Chisando. So thank you to our donors, that's appreciated.
Thank you.
And if there's any other, no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Motion carried, personnel?
Sure. All right, can, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through D.
I'll second it.
So any discussion on these items? No? If not, can we call the roll?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried, Buildings and Grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, any, any discussion? Okay, can you call the roll please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried, Buildings and Grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, any, any discussion? Okay, can you call the roll please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried, Buildings and Grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, any, any discussion? Okay, can you call the roll please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried, Buildings and Grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, any, any discussion? Okay, can you call the roll please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Jack Marley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.